Good, you've got questions.
I had everybody at one point or another.
Good.
Depends. I'll be allowed, don't you?
Evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Brendan, would you lead us, please, as you've done for the last six years?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God.
Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick.
Here.
Trustee Raco.
Here.
Trustee Sheehan.
Here.
Trustee Casera.
Here.
Trustee Lotner.
Here.
Trustee Zora.
Here.
President DiCipio.
Here.
Quorum is present, sir.
Thank you, Amanda. Public participation. Moving on consent agenda, Amanda.
The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes, executive session meeting February 26, 2018. Village Board meeting October 23, 2018. Executive session meeting October 23, 2018. Work session meeting November 13. Solution authorizing the destruction of certain verbatim records of closed meetings. C, action notice of annual schedule of regular meetings. Motion to approve a resolution approving the annual schedule of regular meeting dates for 2019. D, action annual post issuance compliance report. Motion to accept the annual post issuance compliance report. E, 2018 police pension municipal compliance report. Motion to accept the 2018 police pension municipal compliance report. F, action zoning applications number 2018-08, 1201 Barnesdale. Motion to approve an ordinance amending the LaGrange Park zoning code as amended. Two, to approve an ordinance granting a special use permit for accessory truck rental, a special use permit for outdoor storage, a variation for outdoor storage height, a variation for allowable fence material, and a variation for the location of a wall sign for 1201 Barnesdale, 1201 Barnesdale LLC, case 2018-08. G, action motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of operating bills and salaries is itemized in the check registers. H, action motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and January 22, 2019, with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the board of trustees at its regular meeting to be held on January 22, 2019.
Thank you, Amanda. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Amanda, call the roll.
Trustee Messick.
Yes.
Trustee Raco.
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan.
Yes.
Trustee Casera.
Yes.
Trustee Lotner.
Yes.
Trustee Zora.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Next up is village managers' report. Julia?
So earlier this eve-evening, just before the village board meeting, we had a cake and coffee sent off for our director of public works, Brendan McLaughlin. Brendan McLaughlin has served the village of LaGrange Park since 2012. He's been with us six years, and they've been wonderful. Brendan McLaughlin has accepted a position, the director of public works, for the village of Claridan Hills, beautiful community. So we're very happy for Brendan in his next adventure. But it's going to be very sad to see him go. So whenever our employees leave to go on to their next, their next stop in their career, we want to make sure that we take time to let them know how much we appreciate what they've done for the organization, for the community. So what we have put together for this evening is a plaque for Brendan that shows our appreciation to him as the director of public works. But before I give that to him, I'm going to show the group what it looks like. And I'm going to mention some notes about the accomplishments that Brendan has achieved in our community. It's a beautiful plaque, and it is certainly befitting for the wonderful things that Brendan has done in LaGrange Park. So Brendan came to us from the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission in May 2012, and boy, have we benefited from his presence here. He has achieved a number of accomplishments for our village, and I'd like to just name a few. It is a long list. I'm going to start it off, and then I'm going to turn it over to President DiCipio, and he's going to hand it back to me. But really, it's, I think it provides a sense of the comprehensive nature and the quantity and the quality of the work that he has done in the community. He successfully oversaw the construction of the public works garage project through a design-build process and under budget. He prepared a fleet management plan that plans our replacement out for 10 years. He oversaw the completion of the Beach Avenue parking lot construction. That's bringing back some memories, right? Established working relationships with neighboring towns and their public works directors and engaged in joint purchasing where appropriate and optimal. He coordinated activities through several flood and heavy rain events. He oversaw winter option, winter operations over the years. He increased the quality and efficiency of the tree planting program. He oversaw all the sewer lining. He initiated a pavement patching program, selected a new water operator. He expanded his public works expertise with professional associations, and he served on an Irma committee. And he was a staff liaison to the Cool Village Commission. Anne Wiegand is in the audience. She's a member of the Sustainability Commission. Started off as the Cool Village Commission.
Can you represent the commission to thank Brendan for his service?
Thank you for being here. See Brendan?
[laughing]
Told you. Thank you, Anne, for being here. That's really nice. And in Brendan's role as the staff liaison to the Sustainability Commission, he helped launch new programs and supported those programs. He reevaluated salt and winter operations for maximum effectiveness. I'm going to draw a line right here. President DiCipio, 14.
Okay. Initiated a comprehensive tree inspection, plan and manage us through the EAP plan, comprehensive road planning for the road bond referendum, a 10-year plan we all enjoy. Worked with Larry on water infrastructure and rate study. Created a safety communication plan. Writing all these down, Brendan?
[laughing]
Went claim-free for one year, earning Irma award. Improved process for water main repair notification. Developed new landscaping themes at Polet Corner and Scott Dale Road entrance. Graduated from IPSI, Illinois Public Service Institute. Oversaw three years of pavement improvements. Closed out Heatherdale subdivision public work. Cleaned and televised tens of thousands of the sewer system. Oversaw the work on the water main work on LaGrange Road. Oversaw the water meter reader upgrades. Assisted with NiCor improvements project. Facilitated the new fiber placement, all with two other villages. Selected new foreman. Placed water main on Richmond and other areas in-house. Kept budget in line. Completed water tower work. Improved landscaping at Village Hall.
Okay, so I just wanted to take a quick, make quick mention that one of the themes that kept on coming back over the years, which I'm sure you've all heard, which is we have the best, no plowing around. Okay, so very clearly, that was evident in Brendan's personnel file. Best plowing around, so definitely to be commended. In talking with some of the employees at Village Hall, here are some of the things that they had to say. Brendan is very detail-oriented and is always ready and able with answers, data, and maps. He is a thinker and a planner. He has a great sense of humor, has the best work-appropriate work one-liners. Has the best work-appropriate one-liners. He provides levity when work is long and challenging. Is a team player and very helpful at all times. Is always willing to help residents and businesses. Is always full of new, original ideas. He is good for one to three good ideas a day, although there is no strict quota, as kind of an inside joke. He is enjoyable and has a great sense of humor. Brendan is a person of many talents, too many to mention. I don't think I can do him justice tonight. He's always willing to step up and put in the extra effort. He's very forward-thinking. He's very proactive, and I think we've all witnessed that over the years. He thinks steps ahead in any given situation. He makes work more enjoyable for everyone around him. He's truly a gem. He makes work fun and better, always. We were gifted with Brendan, with his professionalism. We will miss him. I will miss him. Claridan Hills is lucky to have you. And with that, Brendan, if you would come up, and President DiCipio will present you with your plaque.
I also would like to say, Brendan, on behalf of the board, I'll speak for my colleagues. Not only all the accomplishments that you have here on paper, but the fact of the way you carried yourself, your professionalism. I learned a lot. I know we all learned a lot just by watching how you worked, your leadership skills, how you handled certain situations, your demeanor, your jokes, of course, but most of all, as a professional. We're not in the professional arena, all of us, in the government arena, but we watched the people that we hire, and we learned from them, and we learned an awful lot from you on what it is to have true character and be an honest and ethical man. It was a pleasure and a privilege to work with you. On behalf of the village of LaGrange Park, with great appreciation, Brendan J. McLaughlin, thank you for your tireless efforts as director of public works for the village of LaGrange Park, 2012 to 2018.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take a minute to thank the village board and for all the residents I've come in contact with over the years. It's really been a joy to work for the village of LaGrange Park. As I said earlier, it's, any success is due, you know, a small part in my love and joy for serving the public, and the rest of it goes to all the folks that worked out of public works and their dedication, and then all of our contractors and partners that help deliver the services. It's, really is a team effort, and I'll take the honor for tonight, but it really belongs to so many.
And that concludes my report. One last item, Mr. President, is Brendan's card. I forgot to give him his card.
Make sure the check didn't fall out.
[laughing]
They give certificates. Okay, moving on, administration committee, trustee Lotner.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, I have a few items to report onto the village. And the board is first regarding the upcoming annual tree lighting ceremony, and we encourage the residents of our village to join in the tradition of the lighting of the official village holiday tree at Memorial Park on Friday, December 7. The festivities include the lighting of a tree at the west end of Memorial Park at 6:00 PM, presentation of the colors by local Boy Scouts, caroling by a local choir, music, hot cocoa, and holiday cheer. We ask everyone to, and encourage everyone to come out and join in the fun. Second item is regarding the holiday in the park. The LaGrange Park Chamber of Commerce, once again, will host the annual Holiday in the Park event at the Community Park District Recreation Center on Saturday, December 8, from noon until 3:00 PM. This family-friendly event will include free pictures with Santa, a petting zoo, cookie decorating, hot chocolate, chili, games, raffle prizes, and more. The event is free and open to the public, and for more information on this event, please visit the LaGrange Park Chamber of Commerce website. And the third item is regarding the community e-briefs. That is continuing to grow in popularity for the village, and we'd like to continue to encourage our residents to stay connected with what is happening in LaGrange Park by signing up for community e-briefs, which is our electronic newsletter that is mailed out each Friday. The village currently has over 2,000 subscribers, and we'd like to see that grow even more. Residents may sign up for e-briefs by going to the homepage of the village's website at www.lagrangepark.org. And that concludes my report for the administration area this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Lotner. Building and zoning committee, trustee Zora.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to report the building department activities for October of 2018. 113 building permits were issued in October compared to 97 last October. 930 permits have been issued through this October compared to 821 as of the end of the year of October 2017. This year, the village has issued 109 more permits so far than last year. Estimated construction costs for the month are slightly more compared to last October. Permit fees for the month were also up more than 20% compared to last October. 164 inspections were conducted this October compared to 168 of last October. 14 were not approved. Permits for three residential additions were issued during the month. The Memorial Park project was finally completed. Patrick and Paul Flood inspected the site and approved both the detention and rain garden work. A permit for 360 Sherwood was issued. There was some delay as the village was waiting on sprinkler permit and alarm permits. Work began, and the space is getting a cosmetic upgrade while adding a break storage room in the currently unfinished area. The village market is, also has a permit for demo work in the old family video space at 333 North LaGrange Road. The village does not know what the plans are for the new tenant. Unfortunately, during the ceiling removal, the fire alarm was triggered several times as the system was left in operation. Both Patrick and the fire department staff had to address with CBRE representatives. Emily and Patrick met with the Nazareth staff regarding the overflow parking utilized on the front lawn of the property. A school is considering using an alternative grass pavement system where the grass aesthetic would remain. The work on Haynesworth Field dugouts began during the month of October, and that's all I have to report. I also have an item for discussion. At the November 13, 2018 village board work session, the village board discussed seven zoning requests, six applications submitted by 1201 Barnesdale LLC. The board reached consensus regarding six of the zoning requests and asked for additional information regarding the variance request for the 150-square-foot wall sign. The applicant has provided a rendering of the proposed wall sign at 150 square feet, which is in your packet. Staff has also attached the previously 100 and, provided 120-square-foot wall sign rendering also in your packet. The items for discussion only. Staff has outlined three options for the village board to consider. If the village board reaches consensus, staff will repair an ordinance, and we will vote on it at the December 11 village board meeting. Option one is to confirm the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and deny the request for a variation for 150 square feet in size, but approve a lesser variation for a wall sign that is 120 square feet in size. Option two, overturn the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve a wall sign 150 square feet in size. Option three, overturn the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, deny the variation request outright. This would restrict the applicant's sign to 100 square feet. The recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission was, they voted three to three to recommend denial of the application, but to have the slightly smaller wall sign of 120 square feet.
Discussion. Go ahead, trustee Zora.
So I, I thank you for providing both of the options for the 150 and the 120. I still think the 120 is more appropriate for the site, so I would vote for option one.
Okay, we'll leave it up for discussion. Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the pictures that were provided in our packet were extremely helpful, and I didn't really realize how much the additional 30 feet would really be very bold. So I, I would concur that option one, the 120, I think looks, looks fine. It's not overwhelming. I would certainly support option one as well.
Before I ask anybody, I'm, I'm having a tough time.
I am, too.
I'm having a real tough time, because I'm looking at these two pictures, and one's 140 square feet, and the other one's 120, but the 120 looks more obtrusive than the 140.
Are you sure?
I don't get this into the picture.
The second, the second sign is the, wait, let me see. Oh, I think that's incorrect. Is it?
It is incorrect.
Yeah.
No, the dimensions of the two signs, Emily's passing out the original dimensions, and the dimensions of the 150-square-foot sign are five feet tall by 28 feet across, which equates to 140 square feet, not 150 square feet. And then the 120-foot, square-foot sign, dimensions four foot eight by 25 foot nine, which is 120 square feet. The difference is one of perspective. The, the vantage point for the 150-square-foot sign is quite a bit farther back than the 120-foot, square-foot sign, making the 120-foot, square-foot sign look bigger.
You have a couple bricks.
And that's not what we asked for.
You're right, though.
No, the height, the height of the, the larger sign is four inches, which is one row of brick.
It says five, five, oh, five.
No, five feet versus four feet eight. So it's a four-inch difference.
Okay, all right.
It's the width of the sign. The sign goes further around.
I, I just think we maybe could have been provided with two pictures that were of scale. You know, both the same scale, so we can see exactly the difference, because I can't tell with this.
Plus, also, the S is like in the center of the 150, where the, it's ST. It just seems like this would be a smaller sign, like this is reversed. I know what you're saying about the perspective. This is bigger, but.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Why would the S, the S, then wouldn't this be moved over more?
No. Because it's, it's, you took this, you took the sign, you stretched it out more.
Yeah, you stretched it out more, so therefore, you would think this S would be moved over. Everything would be moved over if you stretched it out more.
Depending on which direction you stretched it in.
Okay, trustee Sheehan?
You can only go so far on the one side, because the door's there. You know what I'm saying?
Mr. President.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. Trustee Sheehan?
Thank you, Mr. President. So far, I still agree that the 120-foot, 120-square-foot sign would be sufficient for that location.
Okay. Trustee Raco.
You know, I mean, to me, the 120-foot side looks larger here. I'm, I'll go with that, you know? That's how that looks, because I'm, I'm trying to figure out this, but I go along with that.
Trustee Messick?
Yes, I concur with the 120-foot. The, it's going to be less obtrusive. And the thing, and I had said at the work session, there still is residents, while it's the back of their house, there's still residents directly across the street or real close to it. The smaller, the better. This should still give them the exposure they're looking for. Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also agree that the 120-square-foot sign is more appropriate for the, for the site. I don't want to be redundant with the other village or with the other trustees' comments. One thing, being the old photographer I was, and I think we're getting a big difference in perspective, is the 112, 20-square-foot sign is cropped a lot closer. And if you look at the edges of the building and where the other, the 150-square-foot sign is, that's a much farther back perspective. So I think we're just looking at the sign closer up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the board has spoken.
Mr. President.
Yes, trustee Raco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm looking at this, and also, I just wanted, I see like the door entrance is 10 on one side and 14 on the other. I'm going to recant and say, I would be, looking at this, to me, the 150 is fine. I don't, I can't, you know, I don't know if it's because, see, that door is 14 feet, and then it's 10 feet, if that's where, but the, the sign itself appears, you know, 16, I, I, 25 and a 9, it's 20. It's longer. I, I would be fine with the 150, is what I'm saying. I don't find it overly obtrusive.
Thank you, trustee Raco. Anybody else want to recant? God bless you, Julia. We're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Zora.
Thank you.
Engineering capital projects?
I think we have to take a formal vote. Oh, this, I'm sorry, this was just discussion. Sorry, it's just discussion.
Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I have the engineering capital project summary report for October of 2018. The last five and a half years, I've had the privilege of reading these reports on additional pieces that really make this village stand out. You know, snowplowing was mentioned, but also street repair and having the accomplishments in a very short period of time with the monies that we, from the bond. Close-up work continues on the village's 2018 paving program. The contractor, Cape Five Construction Company, is addressing the few remaining items on the punch list. This project will be closed of this construction season. The final documentation process for the Harding Avenue resurfacing project continues. Since these improvements were contracted through the village Department of Transportation, I.D.O., all construction-related matters must follow their procedures. These activities will continue into this winter. All construction work on the Sherwood Road Resurfacing Project was completed during October. This project is also contracted through the LMO Department of Transportation, and as such, will require a considerable amount of time to generate the required documentation and inspection reports. Final item, Patriot Pavement Maintenance completed the village's entire annual crack filling program in a single day. While this is a dusty process, still need to dry rot, open the cracks to accept the cracking fill, crack filling material. It has proven to be a very cost-effective method for prolonging the useful life of the pavement. That completes my report for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Casera. Public safety, trustee Messick?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, we will start with the police department summary of activities for October 2018. Total number of crimes reported is slightly higher than last year. To date, all reported crimes against persons and property are at 309 incidents compared to 289 through the same period last year. Police department total service calls are at 8,209 primarily through October of 2018. Traffic enforcement for total tickets written through October is at 5,61. Traffic enforcement for total tickets written through October is at 5,061. In December of 2018, the Police Department will be hosting the Fourth Annual Shop with a Cop Special Event, which will be held for approximately three families which are in need, giving them a Christmas they would not be able to give to their families. Also, in conjunction with the West Suburban Police Chiefs Association, police personnel are coordinating a toy drive, Toys for Tots, for children that are involved with the local advocacy center through the Social Services area of Cook County. Update, probationary police officer Aaron Hansen will be finishing up on her field training program and will be released foreshadowing solo duty as of mid-November. Community reminder, always lock your vehicles, house, and garages when you're not around. Keep valuables properly secured and out of sight at all times. In addition, please be aware of any package deliveries which may be left in plain sight, usually in and around the front porch area. You may choose to do, set up a special in-person delivery with a signature needed for deterrence to any possible theft by opportunity. And that completes the Police Department report onto fire for October of 2018. EMS incidents this month were 144. There have been 1,382 year-to-date, compared to 1,406 at the same period last year. Fire rescue incidents this month were 70, and there have been 427 year-to-date, compared to 426 last year. Many activities related to Fire Prevention Week occurred during the month. Personnel conducted fire safety presentations at all elementary schools and at Ready Teddy Preschool, reaching over 1,500 children. Personnel attended an annual blessing for the firefighters at St. Louis. They also participated in the silent parade in memoriam for fallen firefighters. Chief Magus provided a fire safety presentation to residents at Bethlehem Woods, and we conducted our annual open house, which was attended by a great crowd of several hundred participants. Fire department personnel did a great job in both preparing for and conducting the event and providing safety education to those in attendance. We served over 450 hot dogs also at the event, and raised $400 in donations for Camp I Am Me. We appreciate the support we get every year for this event from the Village, our Fire Department Foundation, and residents. Staff was involved in much work during the month, preparing for our ISO survey, research records, filing our reports, and conducting water flow tests with the public works staff. Personnel attended MABUS Incident Management Team Training at Westmont PD. Chief Magus attended this year's Red Ribbon Breakfast at LTHS. And on October 24th, paramedic firefighters Whitman and Kirby assisted the VCA Animal Hospital with cutting a spring that was impaled in a dog's leg. Personnel provide EMS coverage for three Nazareth football games during the month, and staff participated in the haunted trolley event, serving hot cider, handing out fire prevention-related materials, and helping attendees take pictures with fire apparatus at fire station number two. And just since we just finished with the Thanksgiving holiday, I just wanted to, special thanks to especially public safety people, but also Public Works, because there, a lot of them are working when we're at home enjoying our families. So, and that concludes the public safety report. Mr. President, there are no action items.
Thank you, Trustee Messick. Public Works, Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President. May I first start off by acknowledging, on behalf of the Public Works Committee, that it's been a pleasure, my pleasure, to work with you and to get to know you over the last five years since I came on this Board. The way I feel right now, as I look at it, that Clarendon Hills won the Lotto. So, good luck to you in the future. Also, you can't judge by the condition that the streets are in after they've been plowed, but due to the storm Monday, Allied Waste will not be picking up service garbage until Friday. They'll be one day later this week. So if those of you watching at home that didn't get the e-brief, there's your notice. The monthly report for October is tree maintenance, trimming, and inspections were performed during 35 regular hours. Watering bags were collected due to cold temperatures. Brush pickup continued the first full week in October, ending the season's last scheduled pickup. Crews made multiple passes through town, spending 144 hours in picking up 155 yards of brush. Leaf pickup began in the second week of October and will continue into December, weather permitting. Crews spent 168 daytime hours picking up 432 cubic yards of leaves. 94 regular hours were spent on the maintenance of Public Works' equipment and vehicles. 125 hours were spent filling potholes, patching water excavations, and completing general street repairs with approximately 26 tons of asphalt. Hydrant flushing was completed throughout the town for the season. Street sweeping continued, spending 104 daytime hours. 243 miles of Village Roads, roadways were swept, collecting 126 yards of debris and leaves. Employees attended multiple seminars, including topics of customer service, which they do great, water and sewer practices, and water place practices. 87 day shift hours were spent on building, on the building and grounds, maintenance around the public works facility, Village Hall, and along 31st Street. Block party barricades were delivered to requested addresses. 16 hours were spent completing parkway repairs for excavations and removing trees. Work orders were completed with crews removing roadkill, making sign repairs, and attending to resident concern. Water Department operations, over 426 day shift hours and 39 overtime man-hours during the month of October were spent on maintenance and repairs of sewer and water mains. 31,330,000 gallons of water were purchased from the Brookfield North Riverside Water Commission. 1,269 water meters were read in Section 1. 55 monthly accounts and 15 final meter readings were taken. Various inspections, appointments, and service calls were performed. 12 waters and sewer inspections, 28 meter appointments, and 25 service calls were performed. 15 water bacterial samples were taken, along the Stage Two quarterly samples. 135 utility locations were identified prior to excavations. Two water mains were repaired, along with one service line. Four valve boxes were repaired. Two water shut-offs were performed. Two new hydrants were also installed. Next, Mr. President. Motion and discussion in action. Tree Maintenance Program Contracts, one-year extension to fiscal year 1819. Tree stump removal, tree removal, stump removal, general tree maintenance and emergency tree work. Purpose is to recommend a one-year extension of the Tree Maintenance Program contracts for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 18 and 19. It was recently discovered that the contract renewals did not go to the Village Board for the current fiscal year. Both contractors had agreed to hold their pricing for this year. The Village needs contractor assistance to remove dead parkway trees, removal of tree stumps, to perform general tree maintenance and emergency tree work. This assistance is based on limited equipment and resources of the Public Works Department. The Village's current contractors, Winkler's Tree Service, A&amp;B Landscaping and Tree Service, agreed to hold their fiscal year 15, 2015, 2016 rates through the end of fiscal year 2018, 2019. A separate agenda item will follow, if the Village Board deems appropriate, extending the contracts for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Staff recommends approving a one-year contract extension for fiscal year 2018, 2019 at tonight's meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, there's two parts to the motion. Motion approving a one-year contract extension with A&amp;B Landscaping and Tree Service, Inc., for tree and stump removals not to exceed $100,000, and authorizing the Village President to execute the necessary contract documents.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trustee Sheen?
I would support, support this wholeheartedly, Mr. President. Anytime somebody tells me they want to charge me a price from four and five years ago, I'm going to sign up. So, A&amp;B does good work, as well as Winkler's. They're always there when we need them, when there's dangers. Tree came down and they were out, very short amount of time, excellent response time, so I would support this.
Any other comments from the Board? Amanda Call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Amanda. Go ahead, Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Second, the motion approving a one-year contract extension with Winkler's Tree Service, Inc., for general tree maintenance and emergency tree work not to exceed $10,000, and authorizing the Village President to execute the necessary contract documents.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, Trustee Sheen?
Same as I stated earlier, Mr. President.
Any other comments from the Board? Seeing none, Amanda Call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next off, Mr. President, is the one-year extension on top of, for fiscal year 2019, 2020, tree removal, stump removal, general tree maintenance, and emergency tree work. We've gone over the purpose to recommend a one-year extension for the maintenance program contract, which I previously read. This will be for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Staff recommends approving the one-year contract extension for fiscal year 19, 2019, 2020 at tonight's meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, again, I make a motion approving a one-year contract extension with A&amp;B Landscaping and Tree Services, Inc., for tree and stump removal not to exceed $100,000, and authorizing the Village President to execute the necessary contract documents.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, Trustee Sheen?
Forward-thinking, at 2015 prices, I'm all in.
Any other comments from the Board? Seeing none, Amanda Call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Second part, Mr. President, motion approving a one-year contract extension with Winkler's Tree Service, Inc., for general tree maintenance, emergency tree work not to exceed $10,000, and authorizing the Village President to execute the necessary contract documents.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, Trustee Sheen?
Nothing more I can answer.
Any comments from the Board? Seeing none, Amanda Call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and lastly, Mr. President, payment approval for sidewalk curb and gutter replacement. Tonight, to recommend approval of payment to Globe Construction for the sidewalk program work completed in this fiscal year 2018, 2019. In the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget, $19,500 is budgeted in the Motor Fuel Tax Fund, and $20,000 is budgeted in the General Fund. Another $20,000 is budgeted in the General Fund as part of the Comprehensive Sidewalk Program, which was planned to develop locations for sidewalk grinding rather than sidewalk replacement. Unfortunately, workload factors did not allow us to get the grinding program off the ground this year. Pardon me. Globe Construction recently completed sidewalk and curb replacement work in the Village. They also performed some concrete replacement, approximately $10,382 worth, related to water main repairs. All of the work is within, within budget, but staff thought the Village Board should approve it as we deviated from the initial plan to implement concrete grinding in lieu of concrete replacement. Staff recommends approving payment to Globe, Globe Construction in the amount of $69,882.50. Therefore, Mr. President, I make a motion to approve a payment to Globe Construction for sidewalk work completed this fiscal year 2018, 2019, in the amount of $69,882.50.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, Trustee Sheen?
Safety comes first, Mr. President. The sidewalk squares were replaced. I'm sure we'll take a good look at the grinding next year, but the work has already been done. The residents are safer. I fully support this.
Any other comments from the Board? Amanda Call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes Public Works, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen. Finance Committee, Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could first take this opportunity to thank Brendan. I was on the Cool Village Commission when it first began, and having your support really gave the Cool Village Commission legs. And you gave us ideas, and you were receptive to listening to what we had. And like I said, it gave us legs, and thank you. And as you know, you are appreciated. Three members of the now Sustainability Commission came tonight to send you off and wish you well. So I just want to take that opportunity to thank you. Financial. This member, okay, so it's for 50% of the year through the fiscal year. To date, general revenue fund is at 53% of the annual budget and about $388,000 higher than the prior year. Property tax revenue is $63,000 or 4% greater than last year, due in part to refunds in the prior year. Sales tax receipts are about 13% higher than last year, while telecommunication taxes are down about 7%. Permit revenue is up over $32,000 or 14% compared to last year. Intergovernmental revenue is up about 9% compared to last year, with income tax receipts 8% higher than last year, and state use tax 13% higher than last year. Charges for services are down about $28,000 or 7% due to lower ambulance fee receipts. Fine revenue is up 18% compared to last year due to a large court fine payment and local debt recovery program receipts. Miscellaneous revenue is up due primarily to the increase in tower lease fees and Net West radio system member reimbursements. The Net West expenditures and reimbursements were previously included in the Emergency Tele, Telephone System Fund. With the transition of the 9/11 services to LTAC, Net West is now included in the General Fund. Total General Fund expenditures are within expectations at 46% of the annual budget and about $51,000 less than last year. That concludes my report, but I do have a couple action items. The first is a budget amendment. It's to approve an amendment to the fiscal, to our fiscal year 2018, 19 sewer fund budget for the Downspout Disconnection Program. The Village originally budgeted $25,000 for the Downspout Disconnection Program in the fiscal year, based on the participation of prior years. As the October 31st deadline approached, the number of residents applying for assistance increased well beyond what had been experienced in prior years, and the current year reimbursements, including the Park District Vanguard, are now projected to be $137,000 and requires a budget amendment. The Downspout Disconnect Program is supported by the Illinois Green Infrastructure Grant, with 85% of the Village costs recovered by the grant. Therefore, the total projected increase in costs of the Village will be approximately $17,000. Staff recommends that the Board approve this attached budget amendment, and I move to approve a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Second.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Trustee Rocco?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I think it's, the great news is that there were that many more residents who took advantage of it, you know? So even though we didn't, you know, due to participation in prior years was low, that we were not anticipating as high, but it's wonderful that they did take advantage, and we were able to take advantage of the grant program, and of course, when we needed to contribute our portion. So, of course, it's great.
Any other comments from the Board? Seeing none, Amanda Call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Rocco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And one more item. It's the 2018 Property Tax Levy, something that we do every year. There's three motions. We're approving the 2018 Property Tax Levy and annual sum bond abatement ordinances. The Village's annual property tax levy is restricted by the Illinois Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, PTAL. PTAL limits the amount the Village may increase the aggregate levy each year to the lesser of 5% or change in the Consumer Price Index. The term aggregate levy is specifically defined by the Truth and Taxation Law to include the corporate and special purpose levies and excludes levies for debt services. For the 2018 levy, the PTAL CPI change is 2.1%, and is therefore the limiting factor. The PTAL allows the Village to collect additional taxes on new property value. Over the past 10 years, the value of new property has ranged between 0.04% and 0.64% of the Village's total equalized assessed value, the EAV. We will not know the actual amount of the new value until well after the Village's tax levy ordinance due to the county. As such, an estimated increase of 2% of the EAV has been incorporated into the levy calculation As such, an estimated increase of 2% of the EAV has been incorporated into the levy calculation to ensure all potential new value is included. The county will reduce the village's actual extension to the amount allowed under the PTAL. Last month, the village board approved an estimate aggregate for levy for 2018 of $3,715,511, which is 4.2% above the 2017 extension of $3,566,536. The estimate aggregate levy is less than a 5% increase. Therefore, a public hearing is not required by the truth and taxation law. It is important to note that for most residents, the actual increase in the village's aggregate property tax levy should be approximately the CPI amount of 2.1%. The 4.2% total increase includes the 2% of the new value estimate. The village's 2018 property tax levy will also include a debt service amount for the 2016 road and fire bonds approved by the referendum. The debt service levy annual amounts were included in the bond ordinance already filed with the county. For the 2018 levy, the debt service amount is $1,247,750. The actual bond levy extension will include a 5% loss factor to ensure adequate funds are available to pay the debt service. Unless directed otherwise, the county clerk will add 3% to the village's aggregate levy to offset uncollectible taxes. As has been done in the past, a 2018 levy reduces the loss factor to 2% based on the village's collection history, except for debt service. This additional amount does not increase the total levy allowed under PTAL. So, there's three proposed ordinances attached. The first ordinance is to authorize the county clerk to extend the village's proposed 2018 property tax levy. The second ordinance provides the village clerk direction on how to reduce the village's 2018 property tax levy in the likely event that the aggregate levy exceeds the PTAL allowed. And in the past, the village is directing the village clerk to apply any reduction due to the PTAL to the corporate general levy. This ensures that the special purpose amounts, such as police pension, will be fully levied. The third ordinance is to abate the property tax levy for 2014 sewer refunding bonds. The original bonds were issued in 2006 for sewer infrastructure projects. While the village pays for the bonds with sewer fee revenue, the bonds are also backed by an annual property tax levy included in the bond ordinance. This provides protection to the bondholders, thereby lowering the borrowing cost for the village. The village must direct the county clerk to abate this property tax each year for the bond levy will be, or the bond levy will be extended. So, staff recommends approval of the three ordinances. I will do, I guess first I'll do, I'll move to approve an ordinance providing for the annual tax levy for the village of LaGrange Park, Cook County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2018.
Second.
Should I say 2018, 2019, right?
April 20, 2019.
2019?
2019. Did I say?
Okay, I have a motion, a second, discussion, Trustee Raco.
We do this every year, and of course, we're just providing the levy that's allowed for us to just make sure we've got that we can capture the full amount, so.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, a man to call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve an ordinance providing for specific reductions of the 2018 property tax levy pursuant to the property tax extension limitation law.
Second.
Discussion, Trustee Raco.
Well, once again, what's, because we're looking, putting in that buffer of the extra 2%, of course, we want to be able to have that, that they can reduce the reductions accordingly, and that's what this ordinance does, so.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, a man to call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And I move to approve an ordinance abating the tax here too levy for the year 2018 to pay the principal of an interest on $3,495,000 general obligation refunding bonds, the alternate revenue source, Series 2014, of the village of LaGrange Park, Cook County, Illinois.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, Trustee Raco.
Yes, as we know, we pay this through the sewer fund, so, but we just, we do have to keep this ordinance on there for the protection to get the better rate for the bonds, so the bondholders have this backing, but of course, we want to be abated because we pay through the sewer fund.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, a man to call the roll.
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Raco?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lautner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes all the action items. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Raco. Commercial Revitalization Committee, Trustee Casera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Staff has continued negotiations with the owner of 1201 Barnesdale LLC for redevelopment agreement that would provide financial incentives for the redevelopment of the property through the 31st Street, Barnesdale Tax Increment Finance and Financing and Business District. The draft redevelopment agreement is currently under review by the property owner. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee, thank you, Trustee Casera. Other reports, village clerk?
I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Our village treasurer?
No reports, Mr. President.
Village engineer?
No reports, Mr. President.
Our village attorney?
No report, Mr. President.
Motion to approve committee and collectors' reports as presented?
Tell them.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I just have a couple of items. I was remiss during the state of the village to thank LTV, so I'd like to thank Eric Donamire. Eric, you and David Carafa for all of your hard work and professionalism in televising our board meetings every month. Thank you for, for what you do. Brendan, one last time, this is not the go-away Brendan tour, but it is coming to an end here. Just again, a pleasure and a privilege working with you, and thank you for all that you've done for LaGrange Park. Nazareth State Champs again, I've reached out to them. Hopefully, they're going to be at our December meeting so that we can recognize their accomplishment. Public participation, seeing none, any new business? Trustee Raco?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. President, after the election, as we can see the results of what our residents are clearly in favor of a minimum wage and of sick time, it seems like now is a nice opportunity for us to revisit the, or I guess, the opportunity to opt back in to the Cook County ordinances, those two ordinances. I think this would be a great time for us to work on that and present that. We are here for our residents. That's who, I know that we did get, you know, we do look to our businesses as stakeholders for their input, but it's clear from the residents who live here what they, what they want out of the village, and because of that, and we are beholden to our residents, that's who we're here for, I, I think that we should revisit that issue and put this on the agenda and the proper work so that we can provide it with both sides and, once again, like I say, revisit.
Thank you, Trustee Raco. What I'd like to do, since it was a decision by the board, is to maybe place on the agenda the discussion on whether to revisit and make sure that all of the board members are in agreement to revisit, and then we can, we can move forward from that. I'm not sure anyone's prepared, and maybe I'm speaking for everyone if they're prepared tonight to make that decision, or they'd like some time to consider it. Yes, Trustee Messick?
Just so, it may preempt it. The incoming governor has said he's going to sign into law the one that, not signing into law, they hadn't passed it yet, but resurrect the one, the state version, which is what we were talking about before, which is this plus two more years. So, we may just want to wait until, till the new governor is sworn in and see if the state brings up, because it's going to override and it's going to be all, the whole state on one's footing.
Would anyone else care to interject, or would we want to discuss this at the next meeting? See, my, my question, I'm not, I mean, and we've talked about this before, I'm all for minimum wage and sick days. That, that's not the core issue here. I think the core issue is the vehicle by what it's, it's being administered. And, and I understand the residents spoke and, you know, they read, they read the referendum or the suggested language, but I want to make sure that the board understands and if they're willing to revisit it, I'm all in favor. If they're not, I mean, that's something the board has to decide. So, I guess my question is, do we want to put this on next month's work session? Well, we have one meeting in December, so it would be then to discuss revisiting? Do we just want to go ahead and revisit it? What is the flavor of the board? And I've heard from Trustee Raco and Trustee Messick, would anyone else care to speak it at this time, or do you want to hold thought until our next meeting?
I think I would prefer to withhold thought until the next meeting. Yeah, I'd like to do a little bit more research into the status of the, the new government regime, the governor's regime, and, and then, then consider it then.
Trustee Sheen?
For what the board wants, but, and the residents for sure, but I would, as I previously stated, leave it up to state and federal as to what the minimum wage should be.
Trustee Zora?
I agree with Trustee Sheen.
Trustee Casera?
I guess, I'm not sure, we're not actually voting tonight.
No.[1645.48]